Ken, Kellyanne.
Yeah. Thank you. We have two public hearings on the agenda tonight. The first is for the 2013 Budget Resolution 12-36, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the City of Platteville for the year 2013. Do we have a staff presentation? Senior Manager Larry Burkey.
On October 9th, 2012, the City Council received the City Manager's 2013 budget proposal. Since that time, the City Council has debated and considered changes at several meetings. At tonight's public hearing, there is further opportunity to consider changes to the budget. As the budget stands right now, for your consideration, it includes a $3.3 million capital improvement budget, a budget that has decreased from 3.7 in last year, 3.7 million last year. The city has begun to cut back on street improvements, but we will still be able to complete the reconstruction of a portion of Broadway, Stonebridge Avenue, a portion of Evergreen Road, and a portion of Fourth Street in 2013. As a part of this budget, the city will begin implementing geographical information systems for our DPW, a step that is long overdue. The city will purchase several trucks, a tractor, a squad car, replace the swimming pool boiler, and continue partnering with Friends of the Municipal Auditorium for auditorium improvements. The city also plans to partner with the Platteville Community Arboretum for bike trail improvements. The capital budget is funded by some of the city's tax levy. Approximately 34% of our tax levy goes to the capital improvement budget. And approximately 61% of our budget will be borrowed. In 2012, the tax levy only funded 23% of the CIP. So you can see that the city is adding more of our tax levy to our capital improvement budget. And the city also used our general fund balance to avoid borrowing in 2012. The continued challenge will be for the city to do more capital projects while decreasing the need to borrow money. In addition to our capital budget, we're also considering our operating budget. The operating budget for 2013 comes in about $144,000, less than last year, or approximately 1.7%. The city was able to maintain our current services, but also absorbing a few positions to save money. The city has decided to stay with a 37-hour work week and to avoid compensation increases that we are not contractually obligated to provide. Most, if not all, departments saw decreasing budgets in 2013. Single-family and duplex property owners will also see a new garbage fee added to their tax bill. In addition to the operating budget, the city has several tax increment districts. District number seven, which is the downtown, will likely see redevelopment projects coming forward for Pioneer Ford, the library block, and hopefully a hotel option, which have all been discussed at various levels of possible developments. District number five is the Keystone Development. We anticipate a new restaurant called Benvenidos being built there in 2013. District six, which is the industrial park, will see a new cheese plant continued construction. It will also see the improvements to Evergreen Road. District number eight and number four are both reaching the end of their life cycle and are anticipated to be closing in the next three to five years. The city's last major budget that you'll be considering tonight is our municipal debt. We have a debt service account, and the city is currently at 57.8% of our debt limit under the state of Wisconsin's regulations. We have an internal policy, and we are at 83% of our internal policy limits. The overall picture is one where the city will take advantage of tax-based growth and reduced operating expenses to support the capital project funding, while keeping our municipal tax rate, which is based on our city's assessed value, the same as last year and the year before that. In fact, the City of Platteville's tax levy has increased only 11% over the past 10 years. And if this trend continues, that number will be less than 10% next year. Over the past 10 years, the city has also increased our equalized value by 57.15%. We've also decreased the equalized tax rate by 21.34%. And during that period, we've also gotten leaner. Our operations has been reduced by seven full-time positions over the last 10 years. Quite frankly, I can't tell you how many other communities can say these things. These are amazing accomplishments, and the City of Platteville has certainly been making progress over the past 10 years. Does anyone on the council have questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one has indicated a desire to make a public statement in favor nor against. Mary Miller has asked to speak on a public statement in general. So, Mary, if you'd come forward and state your name and address, please.
Mary Miller, Jewett Circle in Platteville. I am the president of the Platteville Public Library, and on behalf of the library board, I want to thank the City Council for restoring the $11,000 requested for our data processing budget for next year. The board would like you to keep in mind that when the city decreases the library budget for operating expenses, county funding is also reduced. The county funding formula is based on the annual budgeted amount by the city or from the city. As the city's budget for operating expenses decreases, so does county funding. Any further reductions, of course, are a concern for us. Our current budget proposal was determined by the library board and library staff. We spent many hours reviewing our actual cost services for the past five years and believe that our current proposed library budget is realistic. The board would like to thank you, the City Council, for your support.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There have been no other requests to speak on the budget council discussion. We still have to make up the 40-some-hundred dollars.
Yeah, we have... The amount for dental and health insurance was not included in the original budget proposal. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, President DeLucky, are we having a motion? How are you going to take motions tonight? Are you going to take a motion to adopt?
Well, first we have a discussion, and then we close the public hearing, and then we'll take some motions.
Okay, well, the reason, I mean, I think we need to add that to the budget, and I don't... So, that's why I'm asking. How are we going to add that $13,353 that's increases in health insurance and dental insurance?
$4,000?
The difference is $4,343.
$4,343 that we got, we're talking about, which is either increased revenue or decreased expenses to make it balance out. That's what we're talking about.
Right, but I mean, that $13,000, that additional $12,179 and $11,74 wasn't included in the budget. So that's $13,000 that needs to be included, and I realize that we had $9,000 that we were over, quote-unquote, in revenue. And so it's really a $4,000. I'm just asking how I obviously would believe that we should include that.
Well, I don't think we could pass a budget that's not balanced, so we've got to do something with that.
Right.
Which is, as Steve says, either cut spending somewhere or increase revenue someplace.
Okay, I could like to make a suggestion on this. We have got budgeted $15,000 for this dispatch study with Platteville and Grant County. And that's, Grant County, we've been notified by them that that they're not interested right now. And so I propose that we might take that $15,000, we'd budget for that, and put it back in our funds. Or use it for where we're, and that'll cover where we're short.
That's a spending cut.
That's a possibility.
I would agree with it.
Doesn't look like that's going anywhere this year, so it doesn't seem to make much sense to budget for that. Other discussion?
Just reduce it by that. I want to go back for a minute and discuss our change here in how we're... The City Manager mentioned in his remarks that the single-family units and duplexes would incur additional costs this year as a result of a change that we made to take part of the garbage fee and to place it on, and to take it off the tax and to charge it as a fee as opposed to a tax. And so I guess the first, I want people to know how much money we're talking here as far as that cost. So even though in the remarks, we mentioned that we have an increased taxes. In effect, we're not increasing taxes, but we're increasing fees. And that number is?
$148,950.
And that number is per single unit house or duplex?
$60 per year is what we were figuring.
So even though tax bills may not go up, it's going to go up 60 bucks because we're adding additional fee on here.
And it's actually $120 if it's a duplex. So it's $60 per unit.
Right, that's correct.
$60 per unit. So a duplex is going to be $120 that's going to go up. So for those of you that own a duplex, got another $120 there. The alternative is to not... If we didn't do that, there's a couple alternatives that we did talk about during our discussions. One was to place it on, you know, to leave it in, to keep it just part of, as a regular expense that we have. And if we did that, then, I asked the City Manager this, then we'd be, we'd be $148,000 in additional expenses. So we would have to come up with revenue to cover that or reduce other expenses, correct?
That's correct.
We could tax, we could tax some additional amounts if we want to. How much would that be? Guess what I'm trying to get at is, is that the way we're doing it, this fee is going to fall on single units and duplexes.
Anything bigger than that's already commercial, and they're paying out of their pocket whoever.
That's true. They're true. But it doesn't, for example, I mean, you could put it on, if you put it on water bills, we discussed this, then your nonprofit organizations would also share in it. So that would spread it around. Another way we could do it is you could leave it in there, and you could just, you know, it'd be part of the assessment so that it would be spread across all, every unit that's taxed. And that would reduce it about 20 bucks, I think, is what we're talking about. What, $44,000, is that what you were telling me earlier?
Yeah, if we had the ability to add that to the levy.
I guess the point I'm trying, I'm making here is that even though we're saying we're not increased... I mean, I'd rather look for additional expenses to cut. What we're saying here is that we're not increasing taxes, but we're increasing fees by $60 for every house out there, $120 for every duplex, even though we say we're not, we really are. I wasn't for it when we discussed it, I'm still not for it.
Other comments?
Well, the other comment I would make is that I have proposed, every time we've had a work session, at least a 1% increase for the people employed by the City of Platteville. I think that everyone agrees that 37 and 1/2 hours was a cut for the employees, the salaried employees in many cases come in on Saturday or Friday anyway in work. I think that our employees are to be commended because even though their hours have been cut and there have been some positions where people have either retired or taken another position, and we did not fill those positions, and so our employees have been asked to cover those additional responsibilities. A 1% increase for all non-union employees, and I say all non-union because there is still a police union, and those individuals will already be getting an increase. So we're talking all non-union employees, a 1% increase is $33,532. I did ask our finance director if we were to increase the mill rate, what that would mean to a house of $150,000 value, which is ironically very close to my house. It would be $10 more a year. I think that, again, given how much some of our employees have sacrificed, I think that I could afford $10 more in taxes next year so that those individuals receive a 1% pay increase. I asked my husband, if we go out to eat, could he just order less expensive on the menu, and I wouldn't have dessert? And he said, "Okay, we could do that." Or it's half of a pizza. We won't have a Friday night pizza. So I think, yeah, $33,532, a 1% pay increase to say thank you to the employees of the City of Platteville who have taken it on the chin, not necessarily because the city budget has asked them to, but we did, 37 and 1/2 hours in particular, but also because of the state. And if you do a good job, I think you should be rewarded. And if they, if they can do the work for 37 and 1/2 hours, and we get our streets cleaned, and we get our garbage picked up, and we get, not our garbage, excuse me, our trash picked, or our wood chipped, we get parks that are very nice, we have a museum, even though some individuals, eventually that may or may not be taxed on the tax roll. I just think it's a reasonable thing to do. And honestly, I think if we surveyed the citizens of Platteville and said, "Will you forego $10 next year in your budget to pay for these employees?", I think they would say yes. So I would hope this council would say, "Thank you very much. It's worth $33,532 to us to have you continue to do your great work." And yes, we could borrow more money. We could take some of the tax dollars we put into the capital improvement projects, and we could fund it that way. We could raise the tax rate and pay $10 more in my taxes. And, you know, that's a lot less than the 60 we're talking about, and we seem to be okay, at least some people are okay in the council with that.
Well, you're already going to pay 60 more already, the way it sits right now, so then you're going, now it's going to be 70.
Now it could be 70 unless we don't do the 60.
But not if we take out the $15,000 from the dispatch study. We have to, from that $15,000, we still have to remove 4,300. And so that would leave about?
$10,000.
Yeah, $10,600. So that could go for...
So we borrow 23?
Well, we could also go back where we were at October 23rd, when we started passing out $5,000 here, $5,000 there, $5,000 everywhere. And then we had about another, we had about $70,000 that we could have played with. But soon as somebody said, "Well, we got this extra money", then everybody said, "Well, go ahead, let's start spending it".
One of the things that concerns me here is that I think sometimes we need to remember who we represent, and it's not the employees. Yes, they do a great job, but let's remember who elects us and who we represent. And sometimes I wonder if we forget that. We're still very, very far from solving our capital expenditure problem. My guess is that we need between $3 and $4 million a year in cash to just cover the expenditures we have. We're running up against our borrowing limits. We can't keep doing this forever. I don't see any evidence the economy's turning around. The statistics today say we're going into recession again. And so here we are, turning around, trying to find ways to spend money when we really ought to be trying to find ways to save money and put it into capital expenditures. We have, what, $1.2 million in capital expenditures this year about? We need somewhere between $3 and $4 million. We're nowhere near that. We're, sooner or later, may end up having to raise taxes just to cover the road replacement. But simply finding other ways to spend money when we're facing this giant hole doesn't make the least bit of sense to me. And I agree with Steve. I'm not particularly happy about this fee. But on the other hand, we did raise capital expenditures a quarter million dollars this year. We moved in the right direction. We're not going to get there in one year, but we moved in the right direction. And I don't want to see us taking money out of capital or suddenly deciding we're going to spend it on other stuff just because we can. I think, in all honesty, there are still places we could cut in terms of our labor costs. We still have fat in the system. And I don't necessarily want to talk about this on camera, but we still do. And we need to find ways to cut that labor cost to where we can move toward city employees getting back to 40 hours a week because we have the work for them to do. I mean, I think everybody understands, we went from 40 to 37 hours. And we still did everything in the city we needed to do, with the exception that I'm aware of is we're not open on Fridays in City Hall. What does that tell you about those three hours that we cut? I mean, everybody's got it figured out, I think, which is that we were somehow paying for something, but we weren't getting any additional work for it. And now we need to figure out whether we need to either find some more attrition someplace or find some other places to cut, to move this into capital. I mean, I don't know any other way to say this. This problem hasn't gone away. Just because it's not September anymore doesn't mean it's any different. I just can't see deciding we're going to just take money out of capital and do other stuff with it. And I appreciate the plight of the city employees, but let's face it, we have a big problem here, and spending more is not going to solve it.
I think that we should be looking at this staffing that we're talking about doing this coming year. And I think that the Director of Administration is something that we could be taking a look at that should not be done this year and should be delayed, maybe even omitted. I think we're getting too much staffing at the upper level and that a lot of money could be saved and go toward the lower-level employees as far as funding. So that I don't go along with this Director of Administration addition and the costs involved with that. So I think that's the place we could do some cutting to help give the employees a wage increase.
I would also say that, I understand my position is to represent the taxpayers of Platteville. That also includes the employees of Platteville. Large majority of them, I believe, live in the city. I think that we will also see in 2013 some retirements. And there's been some indication from discussions that we've had that there would be some savings there. I think that we can look at, when the bids come in for our capital improvement projects, whether or not they are where we think they are, or if they're less, there could be some savings there. Maybe some positions that we're talking about hiring, we put off for two or three months, and there could be some savings there. So I think the savings can be found if the council decides to go that way.
You know, the problem that we're discussing here about increasing employees' salaries is the same question that's being discussed at all levels. I mean, if you specifically read the State Journal this week, the same discussion was on at the state level for the State Journal. It's also with private employers. I write a few payroll checks, and the employees haven't had a raise for four or five years in the payroll, but their insurance expense is going up every year. So, I mean, it's a raise. That's a raise. And when you cover, we got insurance expense goes up too. So it'd be nice to have that, it'd be nice to have the funds to do that, but we don't have the funds. If you wanted to do that, we should have been looking at that before we started throwing in some of these other amounts that we threw in. You know, some of the add-ons, we went after our October 23rd number. We, as I said, if you look at your schedule here, we put five, we put a, we put a lot of money out there, spread it around. That's when you should have been talking about it instead of spreading it around here.
I did bring it up at the work sessions. It's not the first time I brought it up. And again, I will say that our employees, I understand your point about some private sector employees not receiving a pay raise. The question is whether or not they were cut to 37 hours a week. That's a double cut.
Other comments?
The other one that I probably want to talk about is EMS building. We have discussed this item a number of times. I think 2013 is the time to start. So I'd like to include in the budget an item that we will put toward EMS building about, say, $550,000 as budget donation, budget slash donation, so we get started on this project. No sense to be putting it off when the time to borrow is now. Been talking about not borrowing, but the time now to build is now.
So Ken, do I understand that you think that it should be $550,000 in donations? So there would be no tax dollars? Is that what you said?
I'm saying budget slash donation. I'm not specifying any particular amount, any particular separation between the two as to what it should be.
That's an expense item of 550, then.
So you're saying add an expense item of $550,000 to the budget?
Right.
And the revenue would be from where?
It'd be borrow and donation.
Well, you have to specify which is which. Unless you want to say it's going to be $400,000 or anything over that is borrow. But the problem is, in order to do it and fund it, the townships are interested in being able to, along with us, take advantage of what are relatively low borrowing rates right now to do this. And in our discussions at the work session, there was some comment about designating a specific amount and doing fundraising to raise up the difference, whatever it might be.
Well, then I'll divide it, $450,000 borrow and $100,000 donation, making a total of $550,000.
Was that in the 2012 budget? Wasn't that a line item? $525?
It was at one point, and then it never, nothing was ever done with it, so it just was never spent or borrowed. And I think that the way, Ken, that would end up happening is we just put the 450 in, and anything down that has to be donated because it's new budgeted by default. Other comments, discussion? Somebody care to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
A motion in the second. Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Common Council, action.
I make a motion, all right, you have to make the motion first and then amendments, too, right? Make a motion to adopt Resolution 1236.
Second.
Motion in the second to adopt Resolution 1236.
I make, now I would like to make an amendment to the motion.
To at least make some...
All right, I would like to make an amendment to that motion to increase expenditures for health insurance and for dental insurance at an amount of $13,353 as provided in bid. That absorbs the $9,010 in revenues exceeding, that we had in revenues exceeding expenses. And I would suggest that the additional monies would come that are needed, which are $4,343, would come... I mean, do I have to say where it comes from now? And it almost takes a second amendment. The other amendment, the other part of that amendment would be to take out, delete the $15,000 dispatch study.
I think you can do it all at once.
Okay, so increase by $13,353 and decrease by $15,000 for the dispatch study. And that gives so...
Why not just decrease it by the amount we need first?
Well, that's my motion.
It's her motion, so...
So?
Second.
Increase by 13, decrease by 15.
Then you're, then we're out of balance again.
No, because you still have the nine. You still had the nine.
Actually, now we have 11.
No, 11.
Now we have, we're out of balance again, that's why I said...
No, we're not.
11 up. Don't worry about it.
We're 11 up.
Because we, we were nine ahead. If you do the $13,000 additional, now we're four behind. But then if you do the $15,000 for the study, now we're 11 ahead.
Right, now we're 11 ahead.
You said.
You said we're out of balance.
That's my motion.
And I second it.
But she's second. Any discussion on that? Okay, roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
No.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Other items?
I would move that we increase salaries for all non-union employees... I would move that we increase salaries for all non-union employees 1%. Would take the $11,000 that was saved from not doing the study for the consolidated dispatch. And the other 22,532 would be out of tax dollars, which means we would increase our borrowing by that amount.
What was the rest, I mean?
22,532. Out of the millions that we're borrowing, we would add that. If necessary. And personally, I think that we could find 22,532 in the budget in 2013 to cover the increase. But I guess I have to say tonight where I'm saying that money's coming from.
I'll second the motion. That's your motion?
A motion in the second. So we're going to borrow money to give people a raise. I'm not for that.
Well, we've decided to take more money out of the general fund-
Find the money somewhere else.
As I said, I believe that the savings will be found during the year. I think that some changes in personnel, that 22,532 will be found. We haven't done any borrowing yet. We don't know what our bids will be, so that's my motion.
You can say that about everything in this budget. There's a lot of holes in it.
If we're going to do that, if we're going to have extra money, then we ought to be making cuts someplace in order to find that money if you're going to do it. But the idea that we would borrow more, I mean, this is heading us in the wrong direction. We still have, I would guess, anywhere between three and five years left of some level of fiscal austerity to even have a hope of getting close to a capital budget that is reasonable. And this is going in the other direction. And I don't think that serves the citizens of Platteville well at all.
$10 a year is what I'm going to pay extra if we do this.
Oh, you're going to borrow it.
If that's, we raise taxes.
I have a question. Why can't this come from the 50,847 that we haven't? I mean, we have that much levy limit.
You want to increase taxes, is what you're saying.
Well, that's what Eileen just said. It would be less than $10 a year, because $10 a year was for the 33, and we're down to 22.
So it'd be like 5 bucks a year.
It'd be, it would be, yeah. So I would, I, I mean, to me, it should come from the 50,847 that we haven't, that's a levy amount, not more.
Well, you've already increased everybody's bill by 60. I mean, that's what you wanted to do. Your idea was to put that in, so you've already increased everybody's by 60. Duplexes by 120. Now you want to do it some more, right? That's what you want to do.
I believe that the employees deserve a 1% raise.
Other discussion?
As I said before, my thought is that the management level needs to be looked at, and I think there's too much money being spent on management. The City Hall is increasing too much as far as numbers. Previous city's manager eliminated one position, and now we've added on how many more? Doesn't make sense.
What's that got to do with this motion?
That means that there's money that can be saved in that place.
Jan, would you-
That's not in the current budget.
It is, as far as budgeting for the positions.
Jan, would you read that amendment, motion to amend back, please?
So motion by Nichols, second by Killian, to give the, all the non-union employees a 1% increase, total of $33,532, using the money saved from the dispatch, the $11,000 from the dispatch, and tax dollars to increase, borrow if necessary.
Got a question. That number is for what? Wages? Is that what he's talking about?
Yes.
So it's, so then, on top of that, what else are we talking about? What gets added on? I know social security payment gets added on, there must be pension costs get added on. What gets added on?
That's all included, the wages and fringes.
That's in the 33?
Yes.
All fringe, included all fringe benefits?
Yes.
He provided that to us before.
Double checking.
Any further discussion about the amended, motion to amend? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
No.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
No.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we're going to raise taxes by 22,532 about.
Or we're going to save by not spending that money in some other way next year, Mike, but evidently that, you know, will have to be determined.
Well, the budget has to balance. We have to decide now.
The budget has to balance, the budget right now, yes, we could borrow more.
So you have to, you have to say where it's coming from. You can't just say it'll work out later.
I did, I did say where I was coming from.
Okay, so we're going to raise taxes to get it.
And I thank the people of Platteville who are willing to spend 5 or 10 dollars.
Do we have any other amendments to the budget?
I would move to add to the budget 450,000 for an EMS, EMS building, and this would be as potential borrower, borrow in 2013, at the earliest.
And the rest would be raised, then, Ken?
And what else, whatever else is needed would be raised by donation.
That motion dies for lack of second. Any other amendments to the budget resolution? Okay, so we have the budget resolution as proposed by-
Well, I'm going to make a motion to take the, as long as we're spending money.
Go right ahead, Steve.
I'll make a motion to take that, that $148,000 that we moved to the, as a fee, to put that back in on the tax bills, then. So that it doesn't cost a single homeowner 60 every year. It's going to go, it'll cost them more, like, it'll save them 20. They'll take care of that other 10 you threw in there. And borrow the money, then.
I don't think we can put it on taxes. I think that there's only about $20,000 of levy limit left. If what Barbara was saying, what, 50,000, and we just did, what?
20.
20, 23,000, or something like that.
Well, then I'd say borrow as much as you can and reduce the department's allocation, do it by departments on an allocated, straight, straight across-the-board basis. Allocate it by department. Whatever number you need to make it balance out, just take that, the percent across the board from each department. It'll balance.
I can't recall if I heard a motion there, but if not, would you repeat it?
Well, my motion was to take the 148,000 that we just, that we increased the fees and put it back in the budget as an expense, like we had it in prior years, to pay for it by borrowing up to our capacity, just like we did in the previous motion. And once we get there, then we need to reduce expenses to make it balance out, I'm suggesting that we simply go to every department and take whatever percent they have of the total operating budget, and reduce that department's by their percent to come up with the number you need.
Okay, that's your motion.
That's all you'd have to do to get it balanced out.
Okay.
What that would do-
Steve, you made a motion, we've got to let somebody give a chance to second it here.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in the second, now discussion.
Well, I'm saying what that will do is that it will put part of that cost back on all taxing entities, instead of charging it solely to the homeowner.
It goes back to the way it was.
Goes back to the way it was. Put it back the way it was. I mean, I think it's unfair to try to kid ourselves that we're not increasing taxes when we charge a fee. We are increasing taxes, we're just calling it a fee now. Well, let's call it what it is.
So that would cut every department by approximately 1.8%?
Whatever that number works out to be.
Just to clarify, I think the motion said to do something with borrowing, not necessarily all departments.
It said borrow up to what, we've got a limit on what we can borrow, right?
We can borrow a lot more than 150,000.
You're talking about the 50,000.
Oh, okay, you're talking about the tax levy.
Right.
Or we got another 20,000 that we can appropriate. Okay. I misunderstood.
Yeah, well, I'm-
So don't borrow, just appropriate the tax levy, or the remainder?
Increase the tax levy. So whatever the difference, whatever's left there, reduce expenditures across the board by all departments allocated according to their total expenses. Figure, picking up, you can do that, Duane, just a percent.
I think there, probably the 1% increase to the employees is probably going to be, end up being a decrease, then, because the majority of the budgets are wages and fringes. Point of information.
Not necessarily.
My office it is.
Well, Krebs, I can, I mean, you ta-
You have to cut back on posted notes.
I can go through, and if I just pick up some numbers, I can give you four accounts that you can look at real, real quick, that'll give you about $75,000. You could go through and look at account 210, professional services, account 330, travel and conferences, account 340, office supplies. There's a lot of money sitting in those accounts. Just pick those three and start looking at how you can cut those. The money's there.
Well, we have a motion in the second to put that 148,000 back in the budget as an expense and spread that across all departments evenly.
And use up the tax levy first. Reduce the tax levy first.
The tax levy first, and then do that.
And then the remainder.
That's what you seconded, Ken, that, I didn't remember that, but I just want to be clear on this. Ken?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
No.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
No.
Nichols?
No.
Bonin?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Do we have any other motions? Okay, roll call vote on the amended budget resolution, please.
DeLucky?
No.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
No.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Does it not have to be a two-thirds majority?
I don't know. I don't know.
I believe it does.
It's here majority.
To amend the budget, it does.
Okay.
But to amend it, it has to be two-thirds?
Yes.
So it carries. Okay, we have a budget. That was more painful than I thought it was going to be. The second item under public hearing tonight is ordinance 12-41, creating section 22.0515, wellhead protection overlay district for city well number five. Brief staff presentation, or you want me to do that?
If you're familiar with it, go forward.
We have a new well out at the industry park underneath the water tower, and there needs to be a wellhead protection overlay district that prevents noxious substances from existing within the diameter of this protection district, so that we don't get something leaking into the ground and contaminating the water. And so this prevents things like fuel storage tanks and things like that from being kept or buried at that place. So, good enough for a staff presentation?
Yes, I have one thing to add.
Okay.
And that is, I would like to go forward with the public hearing, but we did hear back from the DNR, and they would like us to add another paragraph. So instead of approving it tonight, I'd appreciate it if the council could consider tabling it.
Okay, before we do that, we do have a request to speak. Can we allow him to, can we hear from him first before we do that? Okay, Jim Schneller, would you come forward, please? State your name and local address, please.
My name's Jim Schneller, I'm at 620 Ridge Avenue in town, and I also have a property which will be included in this overlay district at 1625 Business 151. I'm not saying that this is a bad thing. What I'm saying is that I don't like, I don't think the process in which this was done was appropriate. We drilled wells, or test wells, then we drilled a well, and then we say after the fact, oh, by the way, now that we've got the well built and the building built, we're going to encumber your property at certain levels with certain restrictions. Personally, I don't know what those restrictions are, or how they're going to affect my property. So if Mike's, if Council President DeLucky's description is correct, that's probably not an issue. But putting something in and then notifying people after the fact that it's going to encumber your property or put restrictions on it, and a notification, whatever it is, 10 days beforehand to come and talk, even though the well's been drilled, it's hooked up, the building is in place, and so forth, I think is a little backwards.
I wish Howard were here, and he's out of town, I think. It seems to me, if I recall correctly, Larry, this is put on us after we drilled it, was it not? Meaning, we didn't know about this before we drilled it?
Unfortunately, I'm not at all prepared to discuss this.
Because I agree, I agree with you.
DNR added it on.
Right. Right, it was-
So this is a brand-new overlay thing that's never been done before, that the DNR made a ruling statewide between the time that the well was put in and now?
That was my understanding.
I don't think that's the case.
That, well-
Yeah, so, so I don't know what that means for the property that I have there, and what can or cannot be done right now. I took a very cursory look at it, and unfortunately, haven't looked at the overlay district in depth, so I don't know for sure how it's going to encumber my property. My question is even some others, there's farmland there, how's it going to encumber the property of the farmers? Can they apply fertilizer? Or is that no longer something that can be done, and those types of things? So, I'm not saying that you don't protect our water source. Obviously, that is a very valid proposition and something we should do. I'm saying if it encumbers property to such a degree that it becomes extremely costly to those people that have that, we should have been aware of that prior to going through and getting to this point in construction. So opinions and dissent, if necessary, could have been voiced. So, that's, that's, that's my comment on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Somebody care to make a motion to table this?
I'll move to table.
Second.
Motion in the second to table, roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the November 13 council meeting. B is payment of bills. C, appointments to boards and commissions. Joe Nolan is the regular, and Tom Osterhaus is the alternate to Board of Appeals. All right, we'll do it reverse. I know Steve has some reason here. Tom Osterhaus is regular, and Joe is the alternate. Licenses, one enter, two-year operators licenses, taxi drivers licenses, and taxi vehicle licenses in your package. Is there any item on which you'd prefer separate discussion and action?
Move to adopt the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
That was Bonin. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next is comments, observations, and petitions, if any. We ask that please limit your comments to no more than five minutes. No one from the public is asked to speak, but Patrice has an announcement for us.
I do. As member of the Theater of Ballet Arts Board of Mineral Point in Platteville, I want to announce that we will be producing the Ballet Nutcracker. It opens Friday, December 7, and Saturday, Sunday is a 7:30, or I'm sorry, Friday and Saturday, 7:30 PM performances, as well as a Saturday 2 PM performance and Sunday 3 PM. And then it would be the same the following weekend, Friday, the 14th, 15th, and 16th. This is a production that we do every other year, because it's a huge amount of work. We have 105- We have 105 cast members from the entire southwest Wisconsin region. And tickets, tickets can be purchased either in person at Bergert Jewelers in, in Mineral Point or online at brownpapertickets.com. And I do have these wonderful postcards, actually with all the information on it if you want to pick it up after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six is reports, committee reports, Plan Commission, DeLucky and Becker?
Nothing to add.
Water and Sewer Commission, DeLucky, Killian, Steiner?
No addition.
Museum Board, I have nothing to add. Under other reports, we have the UW Platteville Transportation and Parking Update, the Building Inspection Department Report and the Department Progress Report. Is there any item there on which you have questions or would like to make comment?
I just noted that in the Transportation and Parking Update from the university, that there was a note that they would not be making a written report henceforth, that they would just be reporting during the, any kind of joint meetings that we had, any university city council work session.
Thank you.
I have a question about that report. It says that they issued 1,694 tickets. Most tickets were for no valid permit. My question is, how many of those people that had no valid permit, purchased a permit after receiving a ticket? Now, I guess that person is not here, Christina?
Maybe you'd send her an email, she may have some information on that. If you find out, share it with us. Okay, under action items tonight. Item A is ordinance 12-39, amending the official traffic map. No parking on sections of Jewett Street and Madison Street. And this is to deal with the resurfacing and the problems of the horseshoe traffic patterns that we have down on those courts.
Motion to adopt ordinance 1239, amending the official traffic map in this area. Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B under action is ordinance 12-40, repealing section 31.17, the cable television provision in the ordinance. This has essentially been outmoded by what the state has done. And we're getting rid of it to bring ourselves in conformity with that.
Move to approve.
We adopt number 1240 ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C is the 2013 Tourism Entity Action Plan and Budget. This is the revised plan as put forth by the Tourism Committee and it names the chamber as the tourism entity. And I think it's pretty good shape.
How, how many years is the contract? Is it one or three?
It's a three-year, three-year, I believe. I believe it's a three-year contract. That was already passed. This is the, this is the specifics. This is the budget.
Details, yeah. I just have a couple of questions. I believe Kathy is here.
Before you move on, you did reference the agreement that was already approved. There was a slight holdup. The Chamber of Commerce has raised a question regarding the agreement and our city attorney is talking to their attorney and trying to work out the final detail. So that agreement has not been signed yet, just as an FYI.
Does that make this one...
No, we still...
...relevant until, or we still can do this?
We still have to go forward with the budget.
Kathy, could you come forward a second? Patrice has a couple of questions for you. Tell us who you are.
Yeah? You have a question?
Yeah, I understand that the room tax money is higher. Should we be taking in more this year?
Yes, we've had a good year. Second quarter 2012 over 2011 was up 14 and a half percent. Third quarter was up 2%, 2012 over 2011. So we're, we're going well.
Okay, so this budget's based on last year's, which was 56,000.
Right, right.
So do you have any idea what the additional amount is, a couple thousand?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay.
For an overview. That'll come in the annual report that you'll be getting.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask is when, at our last meeting, Deb Jenny was here for you and I had asked her a question she couldn't answer. And that was, if somebody has an event, you know, that happens during the year and that's obviously not budgeted for, can they come to the Tourism Committee and ask for some, some help? And I thought if, you know, I've got these extra monies I just didn't know about, if that could be set aside for 2013 so that that would be available?
With the budget layout that we put together, there's really not money to set aside. But specifically to address that issue, within the destination marketing piece of what, of what we're looking at, it includes a year-long regional radio campaign that we're going to utilize because our philosophy is to reach the larger urban population without going there. So we're targeting the urban population visitors, 2.5 million that come to Dubuque and Galena areas. So the regional radio marketing is going to be geared for that tri-state area. That will be ongoing, that we will be able to plug any and all events and help because a lot of times what groups have an issue with is marketing dollars. So any, any way at all that, or any events that, that come up, we are going to, already have the infrastructure in place, very easily can adapt that in. So that, the, we had a lot of discussion with the Chambers Tourism Council, with our Chamber Board, with the City's Tourism Committee, and we all felt that that was really a good way to address that.
Okay, is there anything besides marketing that...
As far as dollars for... That's the challenge because we don't know what it would be. I mean, it could be, I mean, it could be almost anything. So a way to prepare for that. We just felt that, that the easiest way would be to help market anything that is going to be happening.
And so therefore, okay, so you said destination marketing, that's item number two. 21% of the budget for $11,837. And then, but item number six, events and projects. So are those the same events and projects that would be under destination marketing? Would that be under this same umbrella?
Any, any event, I'm trying to understand exactly what your question is, but under events and projects, it's important to know that in the past, we have always allocated funds for community events. Historic reenactment, Dairy Days, Fourth of July. We have moved that money to, as an expense, to the chamber side of what our organization does so that we can more focus on, on events that we know specifically bring visitors. And that, what we tagged for this was the University Center for the Arts for the Heartland Festival and for their, their events because they do have a track record for bringing overnight stays.
What about historic reenactment? I would think that would bring in quite a few.
Again, that's, we're not planning on changing anything that we have done in the past. The expense part of that is going to be picked up on the chamber side of our budget.
Okay, so that's why the events project is only the 750.
Right, right, right.
Because to me, it seemed like the same. It seemed like two and six were the same.
However, if somebody, what you're trying to get at here, I think, is saying, if somebody came up with a, a new event that we haven't looked at in the past and somebody come up, some organization within the city come up and they say, well, we got this great idea for a new event. Right now, there's nothing in the budget that would ever help that group out. Other than the, other than radio advertising or something.
Right, right.
So that's what you're trying to get at, isn't it?
Right, right.
So, and that 750, if that 750 was like 2750, then you had a couple thousand dollars. If you happen to have that money, then, and that question came up, you could do that.
And, and I can give you an example of what we were able to do already within our, the Chambers Tourism Council. We have a representative from the university who was very excited to be working with us now that organizes the quilt show. And so we're going to be working together to help promote that quilt show in a lot of ways with, through marketing. Because that, that, to, when that was brought to our attention, that they needed assistance with that, we jumped on board right away. And so that is part of our plan. So there's a lot of opportunities out there for events like that. But if it's, if it's looking for supplies and insurance, whatever other types of things for events, no, that money is not, we don't have funds allocated to that. However, if there is an event that we're made aware of this year, it's something that we can talk about to budget for that for 2014.
So the Sewing and Quilt Expo would be new for 2013 then, right?
Correct, correct.
So if they want to do something, talk to the chamber, you're ahead of time and get it in the budget.
Yeah, but that doesn't take care of the, the problem you're looking at. If somebody comes up with the idea now and say, well, sorry, we can look at it next year. All right, let me ask you, just, I want to ask Dwayne a question on this because it might be able to answer it. We're ahead of collections this year for room tax, is that correct?
Right, but I believe we were down last year, so I think we're...
Well, all right, but this budget, 56,000, is based upon last year's number.
Right.
Okay, so I guess what I'm suggesting is chances are we're going to have more than $56,000 in 2013.
That's what it sounds like.
That's what it sounds like to me. I mean, it's not a sure thing. But this $56,000, that's just a number that was saying, okay, well, that's what we had last year, so that's what we're going to budget this year. You could just as easy as say $58,000.
We could say 75,000 if we wanted.
If you did that, you could make that, number six could be 2,750 and get it what you're looking, asking for, right, Julie?
Make it heavy, yes.
Right, and Steve, you're, you're, you've made a, a good point. If when we get into the year and say we get second quarter room tax, third quarter room tax, and we see that increase, then obviously if there is something, an event that's out there that we can help with, that's where, I mean, that's, that would be something we definitely consider.
We do the budget at 58 instead of 56. And because I know in the past, there's been a couple of times, a few years back, I think, when you had a budget set up and we didn't really, we ended up spending a little more money. There was a reason, but you had, you came to the city and asked for a little more help when you didn't make the budget. I'm saying the budget could be just as easy, $58,000, based on $58,000 as 56.
The, the, the challenge with that is that if, if we would raise it 2,000 and make the events and projects 2750,
Yep.
we would be making, possibly a group could come and say, we want help doing this event. And we, we would do that, but then fall short of revenue and we, it would be a catch 22 later in the year. It could be. So, so I guess if there is a budget surplus, that's where I would look at putting this wish list together, which is what internally we call it, that if we do have, we, we do have additional revenue over and above the expenses that we are putting out there for the year, that we're anticipating, then we have opportunities to spend that if we see the money comes in.
Well, I personally would rather have it the other way around.
Yeah, I would too.
Any other questions for Kathy?
Does the state of Wisconsin, Kathy? Does the state of Wisconsin operate, operate any tourist information centers on its own?
No.
It's all been passed to some...
They're, for the most part, public-private relationships anymore.
Does the state offer any money at all?
We get $3,000.
$3,000 a year.
Which helps with signage.
Anything else for Kathy?
Move to adopt the tourism action plan and budget as presented.
And I'd like to add an amendment to that. The second.
Eileen said second. Okay, now...
Now I'd like to amend it to say that item six, events and projects should be raised to 2750, assuming that the budget's going to be 58,000.
I'll second that. The motion is second to amend events and projects by raising it by $2,000. Discussion on the amendment.
I guess I do have a question. Should that happen, let's say that, I don't know, July 1st, there's $2,000 more than what was spent the previous year. I don't know how else you would know because you're never going to know if the money's coming in until the quarter's over. So I think it's, it's difficult to add money to this budget. What I, what I'm wondering is whether or not the Tourism Committee could say at the end of the year, you know, we projected $56,000 for our budget, we actually had 58. So can that 2,000 be put aside?
Carry it over.
Carry it over.
Not necessarily.
Or they could do a budget amendment.
It's a budget.
I understand it's a budget.
A budget, it's not...
Our agreement says up to 70% of the room tax dollars. So it's a budget, but we've already said that in our agreement, that the Tourism Entity will receive the 70%.
Right, so they could be...
So if it's 45 or 55 or 65 or 75, we don't know that until the room tax money comes in. So I guess I would rather see, yeah, if it was carried over or whatever and then that money can be available for special events.
And, and the thing is that, that people are going to put in the request for that money early in the year and it's going to get spent. And then if the money doesn't come in, now you're upside down on the budget and you have no way to correct it.
Yeah, this is to say that.
It doesn't mean that it's got to be spent, it's a budget item. It's just saying that, it's saying it's part of the budget. There might be a possibility if somebody comes up with a great idea, they might go to this entity and say, we'd like some funding. Maybe they'll decide to do it, maybe they won't. It isn't any different. We don't know if they're going to get 56,000, let alone 58, they might get 60. It's just a, this is just a budget.
Any other discussion?
We could be, we could be over or short on it, who knows?
Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
No.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Nichols?
No.
Bonan?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, we're back to the original. Roll call vote on the original motion to pass as presented.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
No.
Becker?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item D under action is the conditional use permit for a car wash at 1950 Ubersox Drive. This is a proposed project to construct a 170 by 60-foot accessory building that will have multiple service bays for detailing vehicles and boats as well as a drive-through car wash bay on the west side of the building, which is what requires approval as a conditional use. This has gone through the Plan Commission and has been approved. It went through a little bit of some adjustments as far as traffic flow patterns and so on and, and it's made it through that and now it's here.
I, I do have a question. The, I don't know, affluent, whatever it is that comes off when you wash a car, does that go into, does that go into our sewer system? Does that go into our, where does this go?
Typically, it's recycled at least once before it goes into our sewer system.
But it does go into our sewer system.
Ultimately, that's where it'll end up, yes.
Because I was just a little, in that this particular facility is not too far from this well overlay district. I was just a little concerned about where this stuff would end up.
Yep, in our sewers.
Okay, that's fine.[1757.88]
Any other questions, anybody care to make a motion?
I move to approve conditional use permit.
Second.
It sounded like Becker got there.
I'm not making an amendment.
We're not done yet, I'll, I'll believe that when we're done. All right, the motion is second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item E under action is the Perriview Stormwater Agreement Amendment. Uh, this is a request by the developer to pay the 16,914 dollars that he owes the city for his share of the stormwater retention pond, uh, to pay that over a five-year period of time with a monthly interest rate of 4%.
Monthly interest rate?
Excuse me, yearly. It's, it's, all that budget talk has got me all goofed up here. You know, daily interest rate of 4%, how about that? Yearly, excuse me.
I would move to approve.
Everybody would approve, okay.
Second.
I thought I misread it.
Yeah, motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Dos? Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Under information and discussion tonight, we have item A resolution establishing the fee to be charged for section 4.07, the sidewalk cafe permits.
You'll notice that there are two blink, uh, blanks in the back for the dollar amounts. Uh, the annual fee permit, um, after talking with staff today, we would like to recommend 100 dol-, excuse me. Uh, the annual permit fee would be 25, but the initial fee, we would like to see set at around 100 dollars. The initial fee requires a lot more, uh, work by staff to follow up on the application.
And then the renewal would be 25?
Yeah. If that's acceptable to the council, we'll get that in the resolution for next time.
For me.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Item B under information is the 2013 to 2015 City Assessor Contract.
The city of Plattville has an, um, a contract with the City Assessor. It's typically a three-year contract. Recently, that contract, uh, excuse me, that contract currently expires December 31st, 2012. So, the city staff bid out the services of City Assessor, and included in your packet is the RFP, requesting assessor services, uh, as well as a copy of the bid we received from the lowest bidder. Um, so, on the cover sheet, you'll see a breakdown of all of the bids we received and what the final costs are. I have not contacted the references at this point, but I intend to do so before our next meeting.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, just so that I understand, uh, the RFP, you said, required that all records be stored electronically through software available online. And who owns the records?
The records are technically property of the city. The software will be property of the consultant. So, when this contract ends, they have to distribute to us that data. So, the data is owned by the city, and they will have to tab delineate, or comma delineate, delineate, excuse me, uh, the information and save it to a CD-ROM for us to upload in the next contract.
Okay, so, help me understand when it says, "All records will be stored electronically through software available online." So, is this an online program, is this a web-based?
It'll be, it, the intent is for it to be available to the public, so that the public may review assessor records.
I see, okay.
Um, so that you can look up neighboring properties or properties that have sold and find out what.
That was what the online was, I was having a little bit of difficulty understanding exactly what you meant. If you are buying the software online, if you are, basically, this is making the record available online for viewing.
Many counties and municipalities across the state have already transitioned toward this. Um, we're going to be looking to do that as well.
I have a question on this, uh, looking at the second page, item four. Uh, what is meant by, um, assessor will mail out state-approved blotters to all holders of personal property in the city of Plattville? What do you mean by personal property? My, uh, what I'm familiar with as personal property as far as rental units, uh, is this going to go beyond that, or what's, what's happening here, what is the interpretation?
You, you have personal property that you pay for with your rental units? Uh, typically, that's for commercial entities. Uh, for example, if a, a business has a display case or a, a computer, uh, they have to fill out paperwork and forms and submit it to the state for personal property taxes.
So, it only pertains to businesses?
Well, it pertains to people who have personal property as it's defined by state statutes. Uh, quite frankly, I, I don't know the specifics as to whom could, it could apply to. Um, we do send out personal property tax bills to, Duane, do you have any idea, 300, 200 people? Okay.
More than that.
Just, there's a, there's a, there's a number of personal property tax bills that we do send out on an annual basis. And the value assigned in those personal property tax bills is determined by the recipient of the tax bills when they fill out their audit forms and submit them. So, if, if a business owner here, I don't know if somebody wants to talk about how they fill out their form and submit it, um, maybe we could call on a business owner in the audience, but I personally have never filled out the form for the state.
Well, it's, their supplies, computers, uh, equipment, capital equipment is what it is.
Well, my question is really.
There's all kinds of cat, there's about seven or eight different categories on that form.
Well, this, this is going to be broadened with the new contract.
No, that should, uh, continue as existing. They are currently required to do that by state law. Uh, what is different, I think, will be, right now, I believe it's the city's expense to pay for that postage. And under the new contract, um, the assessor will mail out the forms.
Any other questions?
There's quite a, uh, range in the, um, contractor's bids, you know, 14, 9 annually as opposed to 36. Do you know why that would be?
I, I can't be sure. I, I think the best thing that I could do is have that bidder at our next meeting for you to ask questions of them.
He certainly has provided a lot of information for references, so.
Yes.
We should certainly know, uh, if you contact these references, we certainly should have an idea of the quality of the work.
If you look at the list of municipalities they currently do service for, it's pretty substantial.
Very substantial.
This is a, a firm that clearly has a, a firm grasp of the assessor role.
Very good. Any other questions? Item C is a contract with Economic Development Partners LLC to assist with the library block redevelopment project.
Yep, earlier this year, um, we approved a grant application to partner with Economic Development Partners to apply for a CDBG grant. Uh, congratulations to the city of Plattville, you did win that grant. So, we have received a 25,000 dollar grant from the State of Wisconsin's, um, CDBG program. And, uh, the library board will be matching that. And, um, the next step would be to engage Economic Development Partners in drafting the feasibility study that we applied for, uh, that we applied to get the grant to pay for. Um, my recommendation is that we, we consider this after the library board has approved of the contract. Um, and I anticipate that that'll occur before our next meeting.
Um, I got a question on this. Uh, I see it's, uh, um, the contract is with the Economic Development Partners LLC, which is also the entity that, uh, looks like the entity that applied for the grant, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Is this, um, and I, again, I know this is not city money, it's coming out of the library fund, but, uh, had, is this going to be, uh, put out for bid, or did they just, are they just, is there a bidding process involved in this contract, like there is for everything else?
Uh, at this point, there is.
And should there be?
Well, at this point, there is not, and it is not required for professional services. However, if the city council or the library board decides that they would like to see it bid out, we certainly can do that. Um, the grant was written, um, by Economic Development Partners with the understanding that they, they expected to be the consultant that wrote the feasibility study. Um, I, I would think I would advise that we leave that up to the library board. Um, this is something that they're paying for, and quite honestly, I think they should be the ones to debate whether or not they're comfortable with this firm.
I agree with that.
And this is for redevelopment of that block that the library sits on, that's why they call it library block, I suppose.
Yep, that's correct. Um, the concept was, if we get a feasibility study done, we're in a better position to apply for funding to help support the construction of, of a library or a redevelopment effort.
Any other questions about that? Okay, item D is a garbage and recycling fee policy, I don't think we need that, do we?
Uh, actually, let me look, did that carry?
No, I thought it failed.
No, it failed.
That failed.
So, it's still in there.
We need this policy.
We need this policy.
Yes.
God, I have no idea what we passed tonight. I mean, I'm writing notes here like crazy, trying to keep track of it all.
This is for the 16 dollars.
That's right.
No idea.
120 for duplexes.
All right.
As, as we look to implement a garbage and recycling fee, um, the staff is anticipating a significant amount of questions from the public.
I would think so.
And, and we think it'd be a good idea to have written direction from the city council as to what specifically should be the guidelines for this fee. And so, we've put together a draft, uh, of what we would suggest um, be a policy that governs this garbage fee. Obviously, you know, we're open to amending, or, or, you know, we, we, we're looking for feedback so that we can make sure we have a, a complete policy that answers as many questions as possible.
And is this going to go where on the water bill, or how are people going to know?
I, I think if people ask for copies of it, we would provide it. I don't anticipate distributing it in the water bill, but I suspect people will come in with questions. Uh, we'd also put it up on our website, in case someone has questions, they can refer to it.
They're going to find out on their tax bill, aren't they?
Excuse me?
Isn't that where this is going to be charged on the tax?
Yes, they will get it on their tax, this, the 60 dollar fee on their tax bill.
Yeah, they'll find out.
120 for duplex.
Do you own a duplex, Steve?
You do.
180 dollars, he has to pay extra.
Boy.
At least.
Um, you're tight with a nickel, Steve.
Yeah, um, so, uh, I, I see it's interesting that, I can see why they, they don't have a chance to opt out on this, so.
No.
Somebody's got a little bit of bag, they're going to have to pay no matter what.
Yep.
Actually, do it by the pound.
And if they go to Florida for six months, they're still paying.
Unfortunately, that's how the policy is structured. We don't want to be keeping track of who's in town and who's not, and prorating days of service and stuff like that, that's.
We should have Faraday put a big scale on their truck, and they measure everybody's garbage and charge it by the pound. Maybe not.
Perhaps the city would offer grants to assist with that.
Sure. Yeah. No matter what you do, it doesn't matter. Any other questions on that?
Well, item six on the third page.
Kiff?
The wording, this, this means that formerly tax-exempt properties may now receive a tax bill.
Right, there are some tax-exempt properties that are classified under, uh, single-family. Uh, for example, we have a homeless shelter or two in the community that are single-family houses that are, um, that are, uh, recorded as nonprofits, or, um, there's a parsonage in town that also puts garbage out at the curb that is a nonprofit. So, if, if you're a nonprofit, that doesn't mean you're not going to get a bill. It means that if it's a, if it's a single-family house, or you're still doing the garbage, and the city is still picking up that expense, uh, you should anticipate receiving a bill.
So, you don't want to change that to will? You're leaving May?
Uh, it only applies to people who are using the garbage service, or single-family or duplex properties. So, not all tax-exempt properties are going to get it. We're not going to send the church a bill, because the church will likely have its commercial dumpster. So, we, as staff, we tried to figure out who's using the service, and then craft the policy to accommodate, um, charging the people that are using it.
Maybe you have to spill that out a little more.
We certainly can try.
Other questions on the recycling and garbage fee policy? Item E under information and discussion is the purchase of a new ambulance. Uh, on a regular basis, the EMS, uh, department purchases new ambulances. Uh, we put money away every year in a sinking fund in order to fund that when the time comes. The amount of money in there is 180,000 dollars, but, uh, the lowest bid is 199,889 dollars. And the EMS department proposes to use Act 102 monies, which they have for, uh, training and purchase of ambulances and donation fund slash supply fund monies available to make up the difference.
I do have a question. This is to replace an ambulance, so this, we'll still just have two ambulances, is, is this correct?
Yes.
And so, do we also then generally sell the one ambulance, or?
In the past, it's been traded in, and the trade-in value has taken off the cost, the overall cost.
And so, is that what's happening this time?
Yes, um, we put out for bid the outright sale of the ambulance, and also to trade it in. Um, the outright sale, the only offer that we received was 15101. The trade-in values from the different vendors ranged from 13,500 to 30,000. Um, the 30,000 came from the highest bid.
Of course.
So.
I, I have a question for you, Brian. Um, what goes bad on these ambulances that we need to replace? Is it just the engine and drivetrain that's the issue?
On this one, um, it's got, it currently has 70,000-plus miles on it. They are not 70,000 miles that a normal person would put on their car. They're hard-driven miles, um, many times lights and sirens. So, it's, that, um, the doors, the panels, the door jams, they're starting to get loose. Um, we have some gasket seals, door trim, and seals that are starting to, um, become brittle, they're leaking. Um, currently, we've got, um, we've tried replacing the door trim or the seal on the one door, and it still leaks. Um, this ambulance is seven years old. Traditionally, after six years, we get rid of it, or we purchase a new ambulance. This one's been in the shop quite a bit with engine and exhaust problems.
The, the reason I'm asking is, uh, I was talking to some people, we were speculating what it would cost to put a brand-new engine and drivetrain in an ambulance, and of course, nobody really knew. Uh, but the highest guess I've heard was maybe 40,000 dollars to do something like that, since the, the EMS kinds of things on the ambulance presumably are still working, and the things that would be medical-related are presumably still working, that it's mostly an engine and drivetrain thing. Has anybody ever looked into a complete rebuild of one of these things, and see what that might cost us by comparison?
We have not. I know private services do that on a regular basis, they'll keep the ambulance for many years. But they're replacing the engine and drivetrains on a regular basis. I'm not sure what it would cost, and we, it's not something that we looked at, because it, we traditionally, after six years, they start riding rougher, and, um, it's not the best for patient comfort.
Well, it, I just wondered, we're talking 199,000 net here. Um, it just seems to me that it's hard to imagine it would cost as much as 100,000 dollars to replace an engine, drivetrain, the shocks, and things like that, that would return it to, uh, some, some decent, uh, levels so that we could get, get four or five more years out of it, and over time, do better in terms of, of these kinds of costs. So, I wonder if we could have somebody look into something like that? Because it's, sure seems like it should be cheaper, and if people are buying these and refurbishing them, it must be because they're making money doing it.
Some, a lot of times, the trade-ins are going to small communities where they're adding a second ambulance, and it's most economical means for them to get another ambulance onboard. We can take a look at it. I know after December 31st, the cost is going to go up again, because new standards are going into place. So, what's now, um, and actually, the 199, after going through the bid, there is one bid that, because of a rebate, that's offered through a third party and a prepayment incentive, it actually dropped the cost down to approximately 195,000. Um, and they're actually, that one is actually the middle bid of what's on here right now, or in the report. So, it drops it approximately 7,500 dollars from the bid price, because it's coming from outside entities.
Who have we talked to about these kinds of questions, about replacing the drivetrain and returning this thing to serviceability, so that we get some, some more mileage out of it?
It's a Ford ambulance, I can talk to Pioneer Ford, they're the ones that. They're the ones that do the maintenance on it. They would be the ones I would probably start with.
I'd sure like to know the answer to that, if we could find that out.
I guess also, I'm curious, if you're through, Mike. The new standards, what does that mean? When you said that the new standards are coming in, does that mean something for the ambulance we're buying that we'll have to update it?
If it's ordered before December 31st, no. Any ambulances purchased after. Currently, the standards that the ambulances are held to is the, it's a KKK 1816 or 1815. There's a number associated with it from the government. And the federal government has decided that they're no longer going to uphold those standards, and they have gone to the National Fire Protection Association or NFPA. And they have written new standards for ambulances manufactured starting in 2013. And there's been a number of changes that will increase the cost of the ambulance.
Well, these are standards as far as the overall unit itself, not just the engine and the train?
Yep, it's everything. Safety, how the ambulance has to be manufactured, different things that have to be put into it that currently are not required. The NFPA standards, it was not a, it was a majority vote, but a lot of the panel that sat on it was not happy with the standards that were put out. But it's what the federal government is adopting, and that's what we have to, if we purchase an ambulance, all manufacturers are going to be adopting those standards.
Any other questions for Brian?
Yeah, Brian, I don't know what Act 102 is. Can you explain that, please?
Act 102 is a state, it's a state fund. And every March, I fill out some paperwork. The township have, townships in the city have to sign saying how much population we cover and how many, the breakdown of our personnel as to how many are at each level. And that's money that's set aside every year by the state and appropriated based on population area covered and the number of EMTs that we have.